We're ready to go.
Well, it is seven thirty, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I believe that everyone is here except for Councilmember Lundberg. So we have a quorum. Uh, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands.
One nation under God. Related bills are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approved the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law. And here in place, all agenda items on the table for discussion. There is one change that needs to go under new business items. See mayor's appointments to various authorities. That would be for Councilmember Hanson via the planning commission and Councilmember Goschek to be on H R A.
I'll make a contact group of the agenda without those changes.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson. Call a roll, please.
Nakala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Approval of the minutes, the special work session meeting of January fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and the reorganization meeting of January fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kanofla, second by Councilmember Starlee. Call a roll, please.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanala?
Yes.
Carries.
Approval of the bills, checks one zero four to one zero six through one zero four, one eight eight, totaling one billion, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Approved. Motion to council.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lijgeren, second by Councilmember Starlee. Call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Nakala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Carries.
Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Award, certificate of appreciation, Don Opats, Heritage Preservation Commission, there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, before I read this, I would just like to point out that I would like to, um, see us get better as a group of thanking our volunteers. And I did that at our last meeting. Uh, but the ones that leave these boards after these volunteers are, have some longevity, uh, I think I could get a little better at, uh, recognizing that and thanking them. So for Don Opats, I'll just read quickly what the award says. Um, outstanding service and leadership. This certificate is presented to Don Opats. Appreciation of your outstanding service and dedication of over twenty-eight years serving on the Heritage Preservation Commission and as chairperson for providing thoughtful guidance and inspiring excellence. City Little Falls and, uh, H B C want to thank you for leading with honor, commitment, and integrity. Thank you for truly making a difference in our community. And the commission names are listed and the city council members' names are listed, um, as part of the thank you. And I did go over, uh, what Gary Block, the new president of H B C, and presented this, uh, to Don today. And I wanna thank him for that service, but also all that he's done for H B C and the fact that we're recognized statewide and possibly even nationally. And Don just had a lot of input on that, so thank you, Don Opats.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you for the award very much.
Oh, thanks for coming on, Don.
Yeah, thank you.
For all the hard work.
Oh, Brad, I gotta say, I did notice, uh, when I went over to see Don today with Gary that, uh, Gary was bumping him for information, so I told Don maybe it'll be a couple more years before he gets retired.
He did a good job. He does an outstanding job. I've known Don well ever since school. And I've been on H B C with him, and he's a great guy to work with, and he's got a lot of knowledge that, hopefully, we can pick his brain once in a while when we need to because he's got a lot up there. Well, it was very enjoyable, uh, way knowing everybody. And there goes past around twenty-eight years. We met a lot of dedicated people that had been on the commission. And it was really, if not for me not knowing, I would never have the chance to meet all those great people.
Thank you, Don.
You're wonderful, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dear Dreyer, State Fire Marshal, Fire Department, received, chief. Are you there?
No, I don't know if he's here, so.
This is when we applied for a while ago, wasn't it?
Yes, back in December was our letter.
So we just need to receive it. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve. Go ahead. Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kanofla, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Donation, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven. Accept donation, J M Developers, adopt. I'm not sure who's gonna take that one.
Okay, and so the resolution from you is to accept, uh, three outlets in Sunrise Division, which is the one that we just got done, uh, completing this past summer. The outlets are A, B, and C. This is where our stormwater ponds are located. Typically, in the flat, um, the planning process, those outlets are dedicated to the city. There was an oversight, uh, on our part that we didn't mention that it wasn't donated to the city. So we reached out to the developer, and they graciously donated that to the city so that we can make sure that those day has, uh, stormwater holding ponds, um, for the, for the project.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starlee. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Barley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Nakala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries.
Consent agenda, animal control report, December two thousand twenty received. Backlincy agreement, Morrison County Sheriff's Office approved. Fire report, December two thousand twenty received. Leeds Online LLC agency agreement, police approved. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, November, December, two thousand twenty received. Planning Commission Minutes, January, two thousand twenty-one received. Resignation, Don Opats, Heritage Preservation Commission received. SWAT team contribution, two thousand twenty-one approved. Waste water report, December two thousand twenty received. Water report, December two thousand twenty received. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Kanofla. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Nakala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Carries.
Public hearings and lettings, lettings, Police Department, um, chief, it looks like. The first one is migrate data to new L E D G server and software licensing approved.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Um, as you may recall, last year we purchased the new server with the police department. Uh, we were able to migrate our local data onto that server, but now we need to move our, uh, law enforcement or, uh, secure data onto that server. Uh, in order to do that, we have to work with, uh, Central Square or L E D to migrate the data. Uh, and the cost, uh, is six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to, uh, do that data migration. And then we need to purchase an additional, uh, server license, which was seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. So I'd be asking, uh, for permission to move forward, uh, authorize that, uh, switch.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Placement of desktop computers and monitors, approved.
Um, we have several, uh, PCs or desktops at the, uh, police department that are needed for replacement. Most of these were installed, um, a couple of years before Mike Kramer, uh, retired, so they've been around a long time. And, uh, they're not able to really handle, uh, the data needs that we have right now. So I've requested permission to, uh, upgrade those devices, desktops, and some of the monitors. Um, that would be from Dell, we purchased that from Dell. And, uh, that cost, uh, or those funds are included in the two thousand twenty-one capital.
Resolution of the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kanofla, second by Councilmember Lijgeren. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I got a question. Uh, I see, uh, for a precision, thirty-six forty power, there's six of them at one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars, seventy-nine cents. And then there's three of them for two thousand, forty-seven dollars, ninety-two cents. Why, why the difference between, uh, the six for, uh, twelve hundred and the three for two, two thousand?
The three, the more expensive of the three, uh, have upgraded video card, uh, installed. Video cards would have, uh, uh, enhanced video capability for our, uh, squad video and for surveillance system. Uh, the normal PCs work, but they crash frequently if we don't have an upgraded video card in them. Uh, the surveillance system we have right now, we can let that run about three to four days, and we have to shut it down and restart it, clear the data so that the video, the surveillance system works on those devices. So by enhancing those video cards, we get better video.
Call a roll, please.
Nakala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eleven, supporting the authority to remove local option sales tax, adopt. John?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, before you have a resolution, this is, the, the resolution is the same as the one that we approved last year. Uh, as you recall, in March, the mayor and I actually went down to testify before a house committee on, uh, getting approval to, to authorize the local option sales tax. But due COVID and the, the way they, they closed out that legislative session, they actually didn't approve, move forward any local option sales tax option, uh, options in, uh, twenty twenty. So there weren't any communities of the thirty, I think, or so that, that had, um, passed a resolution and were, were making attempts to get authorization from the, from the state. Uh, there weren't any that were able to do that in the twenty, in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty legislative session. Um, we, in order to have consideration for this legislative session, we have to meet the January thirty-first deadline. That includes passing this resolution and the supporting documents that, that are part of this, um, and then submitting those to the, to the proper, uh, chairs of the committees plus the leaderships of the House and Senate. Um, we have completed all of that before, and I have no doubt that if approved, we can meet that January thirty-first deadline, uh, to get all of these submitted. Once again, um, the change, or difference here is that even if we get approval in this, uh, two thousand twenty-one legislative session, we still wouldn't be able to authorize, to ask the question, uh, before a referendum until the two thousand twenty-two general election. Um, they do mandate that these local option sales tax questions that go before a referendum have to be done at a general election. It can't be a part of a special election. So the next scheduled general election for us is until twenty twenty-two.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Kanofla. Need discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, um, I wish we could just hold off on this till the twenty twenty-two. I don't know if the appetite for, uh, a sales option, sales tax is what the city residents of Little Falls is really, uh, gonna look into right now. Um, I'd like to get our ducks in a row. I'd maybe even prefer to look at a couple of smaller, uh, projects and complete them before we did a sales option, sales tax. Just, uh, if you can go and build a nice big, um, arena or a building, but it's not used. It just looks bad, uh, up on the city, um, spending a whole bunch of money on that. I'd rather look at a couple of neighborhood, community projects, uh, to help with, uh, build the confidence of the community and, uh, and make sure the utilization is gonna be there for projects like this. So, um, I just wish we could just, uh, have, I'm, if we, if, if the motions were to move forward with this right now, I'm gonna have to, have to vote no on that. Mr. President, uh, John, did you say that this wouldn't be voted on until twenty twenty-two?
Uh, that's correct. It wouldn't go to the voters. The resolution itself is the guiding document that the, the res, the state legislature is gonna look at in granting us our authorization. So it is, it is somewhat, uh, important right now. If, if this is the resolution that we craft, pass with the supporting documentation that we have, uh, to justify it, that that will be something dedicate, you know, so that will be a part of the question that will ultimately be asked at the, at the, in twenty twenty-two. Uh, so it, we wouldn't be able to seek authorization now and then go to the legislature without getting their approval in twenty twenty-two to, um, to change that if, if that were, you know, if we were to decide not to move forward with a, a community center type facility that is, you know, outlined in the resolution.
And if we would not vote in favor of this tonight, then realistically, we couldn't run one until twenty twenty-four?
Uh, I think there would still be the opportunity to go before the legislature in twenty twenty-two. Um, I'm not certain of that. I, I guess there, they had been authorizing them every year. So, um, you know, things have changed with the legislature. Obviously, this process in and of itself has changed in the last three, three or four years. So, uh, there is a possibility that, yeah, that wouldn't be eligible if they, if they wanted to change their rules. Uh, so then, then you would look at the twenty twenty-three legislative session, which then you wouldn't be able to seek authorization or vote till twenty twenty-four. Wouldn't be able to start collecting the sales tax until twenty twenty-five. Um, so it is, if, if we ever hope to see something moving forward and, and being built in, uh, the next three years, um, you know, it would be important to make sure, to take the opportunity when, when they are, they are asking for these to, to come forward this, this year. The, the tax chair of the House was very, uh, specific in some, um, in some press releases early in, in the year to say they wanted to see these projects come back. The ones that were, um, all kind of, um, you know, either not taken up to, to address last year uh, due to COVID, they wanted to see everything brought back so that they could be considered again. They did, you know, they were very specific that they needed to be projects of regional significance, and I am confident that our project meets that task.
Mr. President, uh, I wanna just talk a little bit about, I was listening to Mr. Kanofla and Mr. Hurcock a little earlier, and they both made a lot of sense. You know, this isn't a total commitment that we're gonna be doing this, but it does give us a couple of years. You kinda explain things a little more to the community and prepare. You know, in the past, I've always felt like we just weren't quite there every time when we went forward with some of this. And this gives us, you know, a couple of years. And, uh, I think, uh, in two years, we'll find out if the city citizens, if they want it or if they don't. And, you know, this isn't gonna cost us a lot, you know, in doing this portion of it. So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor on this just to see what their thoughts are on this. Uh, are people ready to move on, or do they feel like this, as Starlee was saying, uh, you know, it's been an awful tough year. We don't even know why you're talking about it, but at least, uh, we have that option to get out there and talk to them, so.
Mr. President, I don't know, I, I, I'm not saying to, uh, not move forward with this. What I'm saying is to, in, wait to bring it before the legislature till next year, not this year. We still got the COVID stuff going on. I, I don't believe it's gonna really tie anything up. And this is a big project. I don't see why even waiting three, four, or even five years to, to really get the community behind it, to get our ducks in a row, to make sure we got the land, we know what we're gonna build, and, and, uh, to get it so that it's gonna be utilized. If we don't, if we build something that doesn't get utilized, it just looks, it just looks bad for the city as a whole. I, I just don't see a reason why we just can't slow down once in a while. Mr. President, uh, we already spent about a year and a half, um, on this, I believe, and, uh, we have a lot of momentum going. This was, uh, I believe, moved forward by the council. Um, and we had a lot of groundwork invested with the schools. And, um, you know, this putting, putting it out for four or five years, this is what we've talked about, uh, why we don't have some of the things that we don't have because we have been putting everything out for four or five years. All this will do is put it before the voters and, um, let them make the choice. That's all we're asking.
Well, and for tonight, it doesn't put it before the voters. It puts it before the legislature to get an okay to put it before the voters.
Yeah.
That's right. And I can add to what Mr. Zilka said. We've been talking about this for the whole, whole year since I've been on it. And before that, okay, let's wait five, six more years. Well, it's gonna end up to be twenty more years. And then you listen to people saying we have nothing to offer anyone in this town. You know, if the voters, it's like Mr. Zilka said, if they're willing to support it, we'll go forward. If they're not, you know, then there won't be the usage. But if they're gonna support it, that shows they want usage. They will be there. So, uh, again, I'm in favor of doing this portion of it now. I'm not saying, cut it dry, that we're gonna push this, you know, local option sales tax through. This is just the beginning of it, and I know from past experience, it takes a couple of years, and you can't get it done in a year. So, anyway.
Call a roll, please.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanala?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, labor agreements and personnel policies. Uh, number one employment agreement, Ann Crib, approved. Chad?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, we have the employment agreement for Ann Crib, um, our new H R director, who started technically today. Um, there, her agreement is very similar to what we had with, uh, Michaela, uh, for the H R director. This is a position that, uh, due to its nature, is not eligible to be part of the unions. Um, so in order to, uh, make sure that we build in, um, equity and structure and, and kind of designate what level of employment, we do have an employment agreement. So both Ann and myself would have, would be the only two employ, employees with, uh, employment agreements.
What is the wish of the council? Do you make a motion to approve the employment agreement?
Second, second.
All right, let's do a second.
I believe Woldinger?
Somebody got in before me.
Yeah, I, I heard that, but I didn't get to figure out who it was. Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Woldinger. Any discussion?
Mr. President, uh, is there a probationary period on this, you know, to show that it's gonna work out?
Um, I am not familiar that with our non-union employees that we have, uh, probationary periods.
Okay, just, just curious.
Call a roll, please. Oop, go ahead. They mean to cut you off. Do you have something else, Frank?
No, I'm done.
Okay, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanala?
Yes.
Woldinger?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero nine, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local sixty-five, adopt.
Uh, thank you, Council President. As I, uh, sent you a lot more documentation in the weekly update, uh, so you have some, some background. We do have the rest of the, uh, union groups. We have the, all their, their agreements before you tonight. Um, as you heard with the, uh, L E S group in the last meeting, um, some of the basics of their, of their group. So the consistent measures are a two-point-five percent, uh, wage increase in, in two thousand twenty-one and a three percent wage increase in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, these were part of the planned budget, uh, numbers, so they do fit within the budget that was approved in December. So there is no need to go back and, and amend that and, and change the, the impact there. So, so that all fits within, in the measures. All the other cost elements within that, uh, that were detailed, uh, are, you know, fit within that, those budget forms as well. Uh, and then on the health insurance side, we did, uh, we did increase the city contribution, uh, by, uh, of the lowest amount that we have since, um, we've kind of moved to this format for contracts versus the percentage basis that we, we used to be there, uh, because our, our actual, um, increase in, in premiums was the, one of the lowest that we had in a long time. So with that, there is, uh, there, we didn't maintain a seven percent rider, uh, that if it does increase more than seven percent between, uh, this year and next year, uh, that we would come to a discuss if, uh, a contribution again, uh, but that, that is still at seven percent. And the fortunate thing we do, if you think back to the health insurance renewal that we did approve, um, we are capped at a nine percent increase for the issue.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh nine?
Second.
Gotta be quicker later.
Gotta be quicker, Lee.
Motion, motion by Councilmember Kanakula, second by Councilmember Starly. Please, question.
Yeah, Mr. President, now, John, has this been voted on and ratified now, or is this still an ongoing process?
No, no, all of the agreements have been voted on by their members. We were working out some final details, there were some small errors in dates and, and other little tweaks of, of stuff, so, uh, we, we worked hard through all of last week to get those corrected, but yes, all of the agreements have been, um, in front of their memberships and voted in.
Call and roll, please.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Wilkigren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Lori, is this the one I should have stayed on?
Yes.
I just.
Harries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash ten, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local forty-nine, adopt.
Uh, virtually the same message that I just, just gave, Council President. Uh, the, the cost elements that we discussed, uh, in our co-sessions and that we approved into the budgets, all fit. We, you know, we need to make no changes on that in their same page. Wage increases apply, uh, for this group as they have for all the others, as, um, as well as that of the insurance contribution.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to adopt or approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash ten.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmembers Starly, second by Councilmember Hanson. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Harries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twelve, Little Falls Supervisors, adopt.
And, uh, again, same, same measures, and I want to, uh, at this time, I want to thank all of the teams that were a part of the negotiations. Um, you know, it's, it's always, partly, it's a challenging, challenging effort to, to have these conversations, and I give a lot of credit to the employees that can come in and, and advocate really, um, you know, a lot for their, their employees in those groups. They, you know, they're, they want what's best for them, um, and respecting also what, um, we need to do as employees and working for the city and, and understanding what we have to do, uh, relative to our budgets. It's not, not the easiest process, not the easiest part of my jobs, uh, but I want to give them a lot of credit for the work that they do and appreciate that, that weekend.
John, it's really hard to hear you right now. I don't know what happened.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, but I really want to appreciate, uh, you know, express my appreciation for the employees that, that are part of these, uh, conversations and negotiations, um, and, and give them a lot of credit for, for the work that they do, um, in, in having these, these meetings and getting to these contracts.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd just like to thank John for all of his time and work that he put into getting these done. It's not an easy task.
Thank you.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty-two-one dash twelve. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Harries.
Personnel policy amendments, adopt. John, it looks like we have two policy thirteen leaves, holidays, vacation, sick, and other policy thirty-eight cellular phones.
Yep, correct, uh, Council President. Uh, these are to bring in alignment our personnel policies for the full-time non-union employees so that they are in alignment with, uh, other, um, groups' plans. Um, it's a, it's a practice that we've tried to, um, carry over in the past and because some of these elements aren't specifically noted to align with specific contracts or that at least they work with specific contracts and then those contracts have, have since changed, um, we wanted to make sure that they're, they're correct, so that's why we're, we're making these policy changes as well.
What is the wish of the council? I'll move to approve.
Personal policy amendment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Hanson. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Harries.
Change order number two, Rice Lake Construction Group Wastewater Improvement Project, approve. Greg?
Good evening, Mr. President, Councilmembers and Mayor. Uh, in front of you, we have change order number two. This is for our wastewater improvement project. Uh, if you recall at our December seventh meeting, we talked about, uh, some of the work chain directives and, um, price adjustments throughout the, the length of the project thus far. Um, so in front of you, we, we've got a number of those put together. Um, the biggest one obviously being the, the rock excavation and the work that was done on the, on the oxidation dish. Altoal, it comes to nine hundred and twenty-two thousand ninety-nine dollars. Uh, we would ask the council to approve this, and that would be charged to the, to the project.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Mayor Zoka. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Hold on one second, Mr. President. I believe, uh, I got something here, might be a typo or something. Does this go down to page two eighty-eight with these, uh, with these, um, adjustments on this cost?
Yeah, two eighty-six.
Correct, two eighty-six.
Okay, I, I got a question on page two eighty-eight, so that must be our, our next, uh, board of business.
Yeah, that, that would be part of the professional service agreement for this question.
Call and roll, please.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Wilkigren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Harries.
Mayor's appointments to various authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees, approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilmember Starly. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Oh, hold on, Mr. President. Uh, was there gonna be a change in there?
Yeah.
For, uh, housing area development, Lee Pan said he was, I spoke to Lee, and he was looking at doing, uh, planning commission.
Yeah, we covered that at the beginning, but the change could be accepted.
I don't have to see it on the page, okay?
You were on the HRA and Lee is on the planning commission.
That's right, and I think Lee's gonna do a good job.
Call and roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Harries.
Professional service agreements, improvement projects. Uh, number one, surface and reutility improvements, Eleventh Street Northeast, will we make, approve? Greg?
Good evening. In front of you, we have three, um, proposals for, uh, professional services. Uh, the first one, as you mentioned, is for Eleventh Street Northeast. Uh, we are looking at having, uh, both in making to do the construction administration, that's basically the construction observation, construction staking, uh, as well as the, um, the payoffs, uh, for that product. They are looking at, uh, one hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars for that, uh, for those activities. The next one that we have is safe routes to school. Uh, again, that will be for the construction administration. We will be, uh, responsible for the design of that, that project, uh, but then we will turn it over to both in making to do the construction administration, uh, again, the staking, construction observation. Uh, that one, we'd be looking at thirty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. And then the final one that we'd be looking at is Eighteenth Street Southeast. To get that one started, uh, we'd be looking at, uh, doing task one and task two of that project. Uh, task one is the, uh, survey, that would be at forty-two thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Task two is gonna be the preliminary engineering, uh, feasibility reports and such, and that's at thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty dollars for a total of seventy-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
A question on the next page, Greg. Up there, uh, let me see, where is that? I thought I seen it.
Was there a change on this? I thought on my. I, I see a, I see a typo, uh, Councilors or Starly, right here in the, uh, do not exceed number. It looks like there's an extra digit in there, um, that, that fourth number, that five shouldn't be there.
Should be a hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifteen.
Correct.
So, uh, does it look like a one million six hundred and forty-five dollars?
That'd be a really significant project.
I'm glad Mr. Starly caught that. We'd look kind of foolish if we go passing stuff that, for a million dollars off.
How would we get more done?
Yeah, probably.
Hey, item number one here. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Harries.
Item number two, safe routes to school. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Goschek. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Harries.
Item number three, Eighteenth Street Southeast, what is the wish of the council?
Make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Mayor Zoka. Need discussion?
Yes, uh, this was brought up at the last Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail meeting, and, uh, they're looking at the entrance point in the Little Falls, which that route is definitely the number one option everyone's looking at, so the sooner that transpires, be completed, the better it is for the trail. But I do understand, uh, Mr. Hanson had some questions about, is not a proper time for that. Uh, like Gideon's Farm is gonna be developed here, and I think that road would give quite a bit of usage through that, and then that would open up to development out in that area, so, uh, it seems like a lot of money for preliminary engineering, but I guess at all costs, so I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of that.
Oh, just to be clear, so, since you invoked my name, uh, we will be having further discussions on this later on a, as the other project, we're, we're talking about, both of which I want to anticipate some robust discussion on. Uh, however, uh, at this point of this project, um, I, I'm okay with this, so don't get me wrong. Um, I'm also okay with pursuing the right-of-way, uh, once that's obtained, we'll see what happens with the grants, and then we'll see how vocal I am against the project.
Looking forward to it.
Call and roll, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Harries.
Right-of-way appraisals, Eighteenth Street Southeast, Nagel Appraisal and Consulting, approve. Greg?
Uh, in a jumpstart on, uh, the project, we did receive, uh, a proposal to do, uh, right-of-way appraisals on the project from, uh, Nagel Appraisals. Getting on a five thousand four hundred dollar, we asked them to, we asked them to help to approve that, uh, so we can purchase the remaining right-of-way for that, uh, for that project. Uh, so when we are ready to start it, we would be able to order on it as quickly as possible.
Do we have some right-of-way through there already?
We do, yes. We've got, uh, a significant chunk is the West Side section that we have. We need to purchase the East Side now.
Okay. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Hanson. Need discussion? Call and roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Kanakula?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Harries.
Any council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees? Does anyone have anything?
I think I mentioned enough on the Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail, but we are looking at, we did receive a million dollars, this is, uh, and one of the important areas is this, that area coming into Eighteenth Street, so we're gonna be putting a lot of money in towards, uh, leading the trail from Sioux Bydok, Sioux Line Bydok, past Crane Meadows and into Little Falls in that Eighteenth Street area. So, uh, we're committing towards that and, and the other part of it we're looking at, we're gonna be sitting down, meeting with the new military museum personnel to see how we can work in conjunction with them to get the trail from Little Falls out there and create a trailhead at the museum. So that's in the works and it seems like in, uh, West Side of Camp Ripley is also opening up quite a bit, so. Anyway, uh, that's all I have to report there.
Anyone else, or do you want to have any announcements? Thank you. We'll adjourn at eight nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.